And now I'm gonna broadcast. Just waiting for the audience to have a connection. Hello, folks. This is Andy Port. I'm the Director of Planning and Development for the City of Newburyport. I wanted to welcome everybody here tonight for the ZBA meeting of May 12, 2020. In addition to providing staff support, Caitlin Sullivan and I from the planning office, we're basically the host for this online Zoom platform for the boards during their time of COVID. So we're basically the technical moderators for these meetings. Any members of the audience, including applicants and the general public who want to talk about applications tonight, will be allowing you to speak at the appropriate times. The chair and I will make that clear. There's a process in Zoom to, there's a raise hand button. So folks can just let us know if they're interested in speaking on a particular application. Just raise your hand at that time, and when the public comment period comes up, the chair and I will unmute you. The same goes for the applicants tonight that are here will unmute you at the time of your applications. So with that, unless there's any other questions, I'll just let the chair run the meeting as normal.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Andy, and hello, everyone and members of the Newburyport public that might be listening in. This is Rob Champetti, Chairman of Newburyport ZBA. This is the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for May 12, 2020. We just, as Mr. Port had mentioned, due to COVID concerns over the spread of coronavirus, City Hall has been ordered closed and public access also closed. And as such, we are conducting public hearings and public meetings in accordance with the executive order issued by Governor Baker dated March 12, 2020. And to facilitate governmental functions, we'll be performing zoning board of appeals via this Zoom conference. To just kind of kick things off and move as efficiently as we can, I'm going to start with our meeting agenda. We'll do the roll call, the business meeting, approval of the minutes, and then we'll get into our first matter, which is still part of the meeting. It's still part of the business meeting, which is a request for minor modification on 18 Ashland Street, at which point we'll then get into our public hearings. And it's at that point that I'll walk everyone through for those that are listed as attendees, as well as members of the board, after they're introduced, will go through the flow of the meeting, and we'll try to be as efficient as possible. Having said that, so we can start with a roll call. I'll basically be just going through the roll call directly, and those members of the zoning board of appeals in attendance kindly report that by saying aye. So calling the role of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the meeting of, sorry, the meeting of May 12, 2020? Stephen Delisle.
Aye.
Mark Moore.
Aye.
Ken Swanton.
Aye.
Bud Shannon.
Here.
Rachel Webb. Ed Cameron. I note, we have an absence of Rachel Webb, at least at the moment, and Ed Cameron, Rob Champetti, aye. So we have one, two, three, four, five members in attendance. We do have a quorum, so that means that we can proceed with our hearings, and we have sufficient members in attendance to vote and carry motions. So moving on to the business meeting, and Andy, I'll keep an eye on if we have the addition of Rachel, when and if Rachel Webb logs on. Just keep an eye out, let me know, and this way we can acknowledge her, same thing with Mr. Cameron.
Will do.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the business meeting, we have the minutes dated 4/28/2020 for approval by the board. Have the members of the zoning board having an opportunity to review the minutes, and are there any comments, questions, and/or revisions?
Is Mark Moore here? I had none. Yep, I had none.
Yeah, Ken Swanton, I thought they looked good, too.
Stephen Delisle, I had no comments.
Bud Shagnon, no comments.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So hearing no comments, revisions, or modifications to the minutes, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, Mark. Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
This is Mark Moore. I make a motion to approve the minutes for 4/28/20.
Seconded by Ken Swanton.
Okay, this is Chairman Rob Champetti again. So the motion was made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton to approve the minutes. I'll just read the roll call, and you can just respond in the affirmative with aye or nay. Mr. Delisle.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Swanton.
Aye.
Mr. Shannon.
Aye.
Mr. Champetti, aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Moving now to the first substantive matter in the business meeting. This is a request for a minor modification for 18 Ashland Street. This is a, this is an application that was before this board, as many members may recall if you were on the board at the time. And I believe that we are to hear from Attorney Lisa Mead, who I see among the attendees. Andy, if you can unmute Attorney Mead to present the minor modification request. There are six enumerated items which the applicant is seeking to modify, and that's for the benefit of the board.
Yeah, and Chair, if you would mind, I just wanted to note that Rachel Webb, I believe, is now able to participate in the meeting. I'm not sure if Rachel, if you've unmuted yourself, but if you just wanted to announce you're joining the meeting. Rachel, are you able to hear us? It appears she's muted right now, so until she unmutes herself, I just wanted to note her presence at least.
Okay, let's see.
Also, Rob, I wanted to make a note that it's gonna be Brad Kuchar to be presenting for this application. Thank you.
Okay, and before we just jump into that, I want to note for the record, also, in as part of our roll call and attendance, we have, of course, Planning Director Andy Port, the City Planner Caitlin Sullivan, as well as our note taker Gretchen Joy, who will be recording and keeping the, and the keeper of the minutes. With that is, if, Andy, if you could go ahead and unmute Mr. Kuchar to present the minor modification request on 18 Ashland.
Yes, Brad, you're introduced if you'd like to say hello to the board.
Oh, can you all hear me okay?
We can, Brad. Thanks.
Right. Thank you. I want to thank the board for taking the time to hear our minor modification request. Again, my name is Brad Kuchar. I'm the general contractor hired by Steve Lewis, both the owner and developer of 1820 Ashland Street, and the engineer of the job, John Hargraves. A real brief narrative, we're here seeking approval from the board for a number of minor modifications to the previously approved variance approved back on November 10, 2015. The design changes are needed to deal with a structural encroachment issue, deal with the shed and the rear yard, enhancements to streetscape to support the existing building, restoration to address the feedback, the public, I'm sorry, the apron, to address the comments from the Department of Public Services. All the other conditions of approval for this property will be audited as previously approved. I'll start with the shed. The shed in the backyard, I was, when I took this job, and Steve, I didn't know why the shed was there. It was a lot wide encroachment. The shed couldn't stay there even if they wanted to keep it there. It was in total disrepair. There was no floor in the shed, there were holes in the roof, and the shed ultimately was three feet from the back of the garage. So we're looking to have the shed removed, siding exposure. When I went to have the sign-up process for the building property itself, and this is by the 20 Ashland Street, only 20, not 18, on 20 Ashland Street, I was asked by Jennifer Blanchett to keep the siding at a consistent three-and-a-half-inch exposure, as opposed to feather it from 2.75 to three-and-a-half inch, and we said, you know, that was fine with us. It didn't, there was no, no concern with Steve Lewis on myself on that. The driveway, to add a cobblestone pavement to the side entrance to enhance the safety in direct vehicular traffic away from the doorway. When you look at the north side of our house, there's a door that leads into the basement. We're proposing a small cobblestone apron that would delineate the walkway into the door and navigate both traffic away from that section there and kind of bottleneck the driveway away from that door. Aesthetically pleasing, and the function is a purpose, a safety purpose to keep the car a little further away from the door when they're backing out. Gives a visual barrier. Our front entryway, we're looking to upgrade the front entryway, the front stairs, and the landing. We looked at a limestone wall, actually, I'm sorry, cobblestone fieldstone wall that comes from the left-hand side and it retreats down towards the north side of the house. That property, the property drops pretty hard towards that five bay window. That was still warm. This is not in the plan, and this is one of the things I encouraged Steve Lewis to do. Without that, you would have a side slope that comes right down into that window, no way to landscape it, aesthetically not attractive. So we put a cobblestone wall there, we brought it out about 15 feet, we brought it back up the hill to retain a little of the front yard, to allow for a little more semblance of a front yard, a little level up, to keep that five-day window at its own plane, its own level, and just as important, to accept the stairs coming down. The original plan, when I saw it, had a lot of stairs coming right down to the sidewalk. It was two now, two years stairs. It looked more like you were walking up to front of an apartment building. We were able to eliminate four steps, put the stairs onto the stone wall, add a granite tread, and bring a brick walkway up to the first stair, up to the first granite tread. So now it functions aesthetically, it looks much better, it functions much easier, and get three less stair treads to traverse when you go to the front door. Lastly, the garage door, we're looking to upgrade the garage doors to a nicer-looking B-board, and positive doors, glass windows. And I should mention, to update back the front entrance, we're also proposing gas lanterns on either side of the front door. So I can certainly answer any questions to the both six items that we're looking to for minor modifications on.
Okay, Brad, and this is Rob Champetti again. Was that the extent of the presentation? Was there anything else you wanted to add?
I know, that's it for now. Well, I should mention, yes, I've talked to Brooks Patterson throughout the process here. So Brooks is aware of everything we're proposing, and I believe the board, everything, I know he did ask about the hedges on the north side of the house, the right-hand side. There were hedges proposed in both the north and south side of the house. Steve will be planting the hedge line on the south side of the house, the adjacent to, I think, Robert Grinowski's property there, number 22 Ashland Street. On the north side, it's Steve's understanding that when he transferred the property to the developer at the time, that he incurred the obligation to put the hedge there. In lieu of the hedge, they decided to go with a wooden cedar board fence, which he believes is more than sufficient, and doesn't want to continue the hedge, because the hedge would be on their property. That's it. We have talked to, we have talked to Brooks Patterson extensively. He's aware of all the changes, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Brad, and again, Rob Champetti. So Brad, just one quick question before we kind of poll the board on the request, which they may be shared by members of the board. The driveway cover, it's being requested, or is it still being requested to change from pavers to bituminous asphalt, macadam? And has that been vetted? Because we, you know, the board members have received early, like March-dated, letters of concern from some of the, some of the folks on Ashland Street, including, including the Pattersons, in fact, about that. But I'm just curious if you could update us on whether that is still an issue in play, or is that something you've already resolved?
No, I'll just bring that up. That was a request early on that we've since backed off of. Steve is more than willing to go ahead, run the brick right through the driveway, right through the sidewalk. And I will mention, what you're looking at right now, that sidewalk will actually be brick all the way through, including through the driveway.
Okay. Oh, so it shows, it looks like it shows Belgian block or granite cobble apron. Is that not, that's gonna be brick?
That's correct. At the request of DBS, we were asked to remove that, and we're going to run brick through the sidewalk, right through the driveway, and then it'll be asphalt, a small asphalt apron for the first two to three feet to bring up from the Ashland Street up to brick sidewalk.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Kuchar. I appreciate that. All right, so members of the ZBA, we have before us a request for a minor modification on 18 Ashland Street. The enumerated points of the modification are all listed in the staff report, and we've heard from Mr. Kuchar on behalf of the project, as well as sort of a referendum and an update regarding the public input from those neighbors that live on Ashland. What, what say the board regarding, you know, whether you think this is reasonable? Any comments, concerns? This is sort of the atypical section of the, of the hearing where we can just sort of think and speak out loud. Anyone have any comments? Mr. Delisle, any thoughts on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I took a look and listened to Mr. Kuchar's explanation, took a look at the materials provided, as well as the letters from the butters and the neighbors, and it seems like this is a rather reasonable set of changes requested to this plan, so I think that I can support this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
This is Mark Moore. Yeah, I would concur with Mr. Delisle. The biggest concern, it seemed, of the original letters was the change to the driveway, and now that that's been returned to the brick format, I think all the other changes are reasonable and really enhance the property, actually. So yeah, I have no problem with it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I would agree with my two colleagues that I think this, congratulate the applicant for addressing the butters' concerns, and I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, and Mr. Shannon.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the rest of the speakers. I think these changes are fine, and I'm happy to see again that the driveway is going back to brick, so I'm in agreement.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Webb, and has Rachel, Andy, can you tell if Rachel's mic is unmuted?
Can you hear me, Rob?
Oh, we can, Rachel. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think there's anything to object to here. It looks fantastic.
Okay, and is Mr. Cameron joining us this evening, or is he, is he, Andy, do you know?
I believe he was not going to be able to join us. He had some doubt in his mind based on his schedule.
Fair enough. Okay, well, so having heard from all the members of the board on the minor modification, I'll say, just to add to the rest of my colleagues, I agree. Do we have a motion to approve the minor modification as requested?
This is Mark Moore here. I'll make a motion to consider the request of the applicant minor and approve the minor modification to the variance for 18 Ashland Street, file number 2015-054 and 2018-058.
I'll second that.
Sorry, Rachel.
Okay, so I've heard a motion to approve from Mr. Moore with a second from Mr. Delisle on the request for minor modification, 18 Ashland Street, calling the role now, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore here, yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Mr. Shagnon, yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes, and may I add one thing that I want to make sure that the driveway specification is all brick gets added to the six points listed in the staff report?
Yes, actually, Rachel, that was, I'd actually shared that question with you as well and asked, asked Mr. Kuchar to clarify. He confirms that the brick will continue across the apron along the sidewalk, and that the applicant has surrendered that request to just kind of keep the brick pavers in all of the driveway, as well as the sidewalk with only an apron asphalt that brings it up to grade to driveway, but otherwise all brick.
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Webb votes yes. Rob Champetti, yes. That's six in the affirmative. The motion carries. The minor modification is approved. And Mr. Kuchar, congratulations. Good luck to you, and thanks very much.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you to all members of the board. Have a nice night.
Have a good night. Okay, members of the ZBA and members of the public who are listening in, we are now entering the public hearing section of the zoning board of appeals. Just to give a quick overview for those that may not have attended the Zoom version of a ZBA meeting, though we do this at the live meetings as well, I'll just walk through quickly the flow, structure, and process of the meeting very quickly, and then we'll get into our first application. The way this will work is with each public hearing, we will just announce the public hearing and introduce it by address, as well as the request, both file number and the specific request, whether special permit or variance. I will read the detail that was part of the public notice, at which point we will ask, oh, sorry, at which point we will ask to hear from the proponent for the applicant, whether it's the applicant, the applicant's legal representative and/or professionals will hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative. After the applicant has concluded that, we will then go to questions from the board, I'm sorry, we'll go to a section where the public gets to comment. And just because we're not in public view, this is where the moderator, our city planner, Andy Port, will have to unmute those in attendance. So if you are listening in attendance and you wish to speak, either in support of or in opposition to, or not sure, but just merely wish to voice, you know, just have your voice heard, simply click at the very bottom toolbar where you can raise your hand. Raise your hand. Mr. Port will acknowledge that and unmute your mic and introduce you. You'll then be able to speak, and the meeting's, of course, being recorded. We will ask for members of the audience who wish to speak in support to give their name, as well as their address, for purposes of our note taker, Ms. Joy. We'll then go to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. And again, as I mentioned earlier, if you are not sure whether you are in support of or in opposition to, but just merely wish to speak, don't worry, just pick a side and raise your hand, and you shall be heard. After we hear from the audience, both in support and opposition, as well as just simply voicing thoughts, we'll then go to questions from the board. Members of the board will ask questions either of the applicant, the applicant's representative, or they may pose questions that they have heard raised from the public during the public's input section. After questions are resolved, we'll go to deliberations. This is the segment of the zoning board of appeals. When the members of the public basically get to hear us thinking out loud. We deliberate out loud in full, sort of full view and full transparency. So you will hear us think as we evolve these thoughts for whatever they may be worth, and we will post questions to one another, and we may have additional questions. After we finish the deliberations, we then will close that section of the public hearing, and we will go to, we will go to soliciting a motion. Because we are following Robert's Rules of Order, we will ask for a motion in the affirmative. Even if the motion doesn't pass, we still ask for a motion in the affirmative. A member will make a motion to approve. A member will then second that motion, and that is when the role will be taken. In order to pass, we need to, we have a quorum. You need at least a minimum of four votes in the affirmative to have a successful motion that passes. And with that, we can now move to the first public hearing, which is a matter of 2020-019, the special permit for nonconformities. This matter is continued from the hearing of 4/28/2020. Gregory Elliott and Candace McMahon on the property address of 1254th Street to construct a single-story addition and a second-story addition above the existing section of a single-family structure on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Lisa Mead, Mead Teller-McCosta, 30 Green Street. And I'm here this evening with John Sava, who's the architect on the project, and the owners of the property who've lived there for over 13 years, Greg Elliott and Candace McMahon. Andy, if you could, thank you. So we were before the board on the 28th. The board had some concerns that were related to the piad, I think, generally. And in addition, there was some concerns expressed by the most immediate neighbors at 854th Street, which is the Murray property, regarding the height of the addition. Just as a little bit of background that we didn't really talk about in the last meeting, Candace and Greg have lived at this property for over 13 years. They've both just retired. Their goal has always been to retire in this property and to not have to climb a lot of stairs, and hence their desire to have a small addition with some extra bedrooms for their grandkids on the second floor. When they were undertook to design the project, they sought to take the most conservative route possible, resulting in the most modest addition possible, but still giving them some extra space. They purposefully stayed within the footprint of the existing structure, only cantilevering a new porch. They purposefully kept the second floor with lower ceilings and lower roof pitch, and they purposefully did not extend the addition on the second floor out to the five-foot setback along the 854th Street sideline, but kept it 14 feet away, so as not to go up on that non-conforming sideline setback. Since the last meeting, I think it's important to note that the Conservation Commission has approved this project. And contrary to the comments of the planning staff, it is the CONCOM's job to determine and jurisdiction to determine whether a project is considered substantial improvement. That is a regulation under the Wetlands Regulations in the City of Newburyport and FEMA Regulations that is actually determined by the Building Inspector and the Conservation Commission. They approved it, the project as presented. While Greg and Candace believe that the proposal that they put forward originally meets the requirements of the ordinance, they did hear the comments of the butter and went back and did a little bit of work to see if they could even further reduce the addition on the second story. So the mean roof height has gone, and John was able to do that, and I'm gonna have him go through that in a second. So the mean roof height was, has gone from 21 feet to 19.9, and the peak is from 30.7 to 23.9. So flattened out is what happened. As you know, the mean roof height limitations on Plum Island are 35 feet. Further, the dormer on the north elevation has been removed, and the roof pitch is at such a low angle now that shingles are not recommended from an architectural point of view, rather, a metal roof will be employed. So at this point, John, maybe you want to go over some of the changes that you made to the second story? And I think I missed, you can talk about the cupola as well.
Yes, can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, John Sava, Sava Architects, 19 N Street, Newburyport. And yes, we tried to respect the neighbors' views as best we could. And the building itself actually now is at a minimum height that we can, that we can live with. The original design had some area with much steeper pitch, and was a possibility of some storage where a pull-down stair in the top area that, for an attic, but that's not gonna happen now. I think that the house actually works a little bit better with a lower pitch. It works. Architecturally, the roof is not going to be a red roof. It'll be a gunmetal gray roof that is not going to be overly reflective. The only other thing I can mention, and you folks with the board and Mr. Chairman, you'll note that there was a question on just how high the neighbor's deck is, because we were dealing with, well, I don't know if it's three feet, how high off the ground is it? So I had John Hargrave actually shoot that deck elevation, and the deck elevation is 26. It was actually 26.22, and I rounded it off to 26. So the peak is actually at, right around 32.5. So that's about six and a half feet off the deck is where the new peak is inside their house. And I don't remember if there's a step up into the kitchen, but if there is a six-inch step, then from inside the house, you could probably start to look over the roof. The dormer on the west side we removed, which should give a better view towards that sunset area, anyway. The dormer has been lowered, the chimney has been lowered. So that is essentially what we tried to do to accommodate the neighbors. That sound about right, Lisa?
Yeah, I think so. And I think what's important Yeah, I think so. And I think what's important is, given the elevation of the deck at 26 and the further lowering of the mean roof, really what you're talking about is the very top part of the peak that can't be seen over. Because now the house, the roof has already changed. The gable end of the roof was already changed that was adjacent to 54th Street, so that that whole section could be seen over. And now the roof has been lowered and the pitch lowered. So there is actually a portion of the roof that can be seen over now off of the deck at elevation 26. So when the mean roof height is now 21. So there has been a significant amount of effort in that regard, notwithstanding the fact that there's nowhere in the ordinance that protects view. And I'm not going to go into that in great detail, but I provided some case law to the board to reflect that if there is not something in the ordinance that protects view, the board cannot use that to deny a application based upon not being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the applicant, or excuse me, the abutter claiming view would not have standing because that particular item's not protected in the ordinance. So the question is then, do these alterations and these changes meet the requirements of the special permit to modify pre-existing non-conforming, single-family structure under the Plum Island Overlay District? And of course, the test for that is whether or not we meet the dimensional requirements, and we do. As we said before, we stay under the FAR, we stay under the height, we really stay under the height now. And we're not within the sidelines that you're not permitted to be. So we meet the first criteria, namely the strictures that actually create the purpose in the ordinance or protect the purpose of the ordinance. So the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the Plum Island Overlay District generally and that health and welfare and environment. And in fact, in order to affect that purpose, the ordinance adopted a stricture that said, if you meet these requirements and you're not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, then you've meet the purpose and intent of the ordinance. So we meet the strict application of that provision. The next question is whether or not the change will be substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood or the PIOD. And then determining whether the proposed changes are substantially more detrimental, the board is required to consider the conditions in the neighborhood generally as compared to the subject lot and the changes that will be made. Again, I've provided you case law where the land court has determined that the zoning board correctly found there was no substantial detriment. For example, where the board noted that the nonconformities were not unique to the defendant's property, and the objecting abutters in that particular instance also had encroached upon the sideline setback, notwithstanding the fact that in that instance, the applicant had added a second story to an accessory structure, namely a garage. It's important to note that the term substantially means to a great or significant extent. And so here, the question is, is this upward extension substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions or to the PIOD than the existing conditions? It's interesting to note further that the planning office has raised some issues, and we had this conversation last time, related to sea level rise and storm surge. None of those are a reason to deny this permit. In fact, the courts have noted that things that might happen in the future that you want to maybe prevent are not a basis to deny a permit here and now that actually meets the requirements of the terms of the ordinance. And further, those kinds of things, sea level rise, flooding, storm surge, those are not protected under the zoning act generally. And in fact, our ordinance doesn't have anything about that. In fact, it is the conservation commission that has given the jurisdiction to apply those kinds of criteria and the FEMA requirements to this particular project. So here, we have non-conforming front yard and side yard setback. The applicant's resident is not any different than the nonconformities in the many of the abutting properties. The Murray's next door purchased their property knowing that they were only about four feet from the McMahon's property, so that wasn't a surprise at all. It's also, should be noted that in recent years, different, you know, the Murray's have put an oil tank right beside the property line and a propane tank right beside the property line. And the McMahon's see that out the window, and it is what it is because Plum Island is tight. But in this instance, the proposed renovation is 14 feet away from the property line. It doesn't even go up the five-foot setback that already exists. So it's actually further away from the Murray's property, which is only four feet away from the property line and which is the place where it was when the Murray's purchased it. So the small expansion, the footprint to the structure complies with the setback. That's the deck or the porch in the back, which is cantilevered and not even a change of the ground itself. The proposed addition and the resulting structure is similar and in keeping with the size of the other residential structures in the neighborhood. Actually, it will be much lower and not as tall as most all of the other structures in the immediate neighborhood, and we pointed that out the last time. I might add here that I have provided two more letters of support. Now there are letters of support from every single surrounding abutter except for the Murray's. I guess I can't, I think that it needs to be said again that the proposed addition is 14 feet away from that sideline, where actually the ordinance allows you to build something within 10 feet, and it's 14 feet away. So we believe that we have met the criteria. We hope that with this additional information, the board will see that we meet the purpose of the Plum Island Overlay District and is not substantially more detrimental to both the purpose of the ordinance and the district and the neighborhood. And we certainly meet the specific criteria. I think, I also think it's important to note, Andy, if you could just scroll down one more. The Murray's, excuse me, the Greg and Candace could actually build a house on stilts in the middle of this lot. This lot is huge compared to other lots in the district. It's like 98, 9,500, 9,800 square feet. So it's double most of the lots in the district. So it has a pretty significant FAR. So there could be a house built on stilts right in the middle of the lot, meeting all setback requirements of 20 feet. It would go up 35 feet and include 2,375 square feet. It would be worse for everybody around there because it would block a number of views, not just, not just the Murray's next door. Greg and Candace have no desire to do this because the whole purpose of what they're doing is to not have to climb stairs. They have kept the addition at a minimum where they could actually do more. They're trying to be considerate of the Murray's next door. And we believe that they have made every effort to do that. And certainly that the proposed addition of this second story, and if you could go back, Andy, is certainly not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure to the neighborhood, certainly, and to the PIOD for sure, because it's well below what those things would be allowed to do in what those criteria allowed, are allowed to be in the PIOD. And so it is certainly not a great, a greater or significant extent different or more detrimental than the surrounding area. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Mead, thank you very much for the presentation. Moving now to the public comment portion of the meeting. Do we have, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of the application for 1254th Street? If you do, just please, just click, raise your hand on the Zoom call and Andy Port will open your mic. Anyone wishing to speak in support?
Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing anyone present.
Okay, moving on. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the application for 1254th Street, special permit for nonconformities? I see one hand raised. Lynn Murray. Andy, could you unmute Ms. Murray?
Yes, Lynn, you're unmuted. And Lynn, you'll have to unmute on your end as well. And Lynn, have you unmuted your microphone to speak?
If you, if you look at the bottom left of the Zoom screen, you'll see an icon of a microphone.
Are we good now?
Oh, hey, there we are. Thank you.
There we go. Would you add yourself?
Yeah, my name is Richard Murray. I live next door.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Murray, if you could just each, one at a time, please just identify yourselves by name and of course, address for purposes of our note taker and let us know your thoughts, please.
Richard Murray.
Okay, my name is Richard Murray. I live on 854th Street in Newburyport, Massachusetts.
Okay, Mr. Murray, what do you wish to say, sir?
I would like to, I mean, I have a question for the board. Can I ask a question for the board?
Certainly, I mean, you can ask, you can pose a question, though we will table the question to be answered during a subsequent section of the meeting. But by all means, you know, embed a question that you wish us to address as part of your comments. But this is really just your thoughts, your comments, whatever you wish to say, sir.
So that means, yes, I can ask a question?
You can ask a question, yes, but we won't necessarily answer it right away.
Okay, you don't have to ask. I was just, I was just curious if anybody on the board, that all the people that I'm talking to now have come down and looked at the property. I'm just curious. You don't have to answer. I'm just curious if anybody come down here and took a look. And I know Lisa, Lisa, I know Lisa Mead has been, is very familiar with the area.
Okay, this is Chairman Champetti again, Mr. Murray. I will make sure that the board takes an opportunity to address that question. Oftentimes, I will say, sir, that each of us get materials in advance. And I will say, speaking for myself, though I'm almost certain that all of my colleagues do the same, throughout the course of the week or so that precedes a meeting, we will all endeavor and almost always visit every site just to get a lay of land to the extent we don't already know. And I can say, speaking for myself, that I've been there. But when we get to that next section, I'll let my colleagues speak to that point. But was there anything else you wanted to say for the record, sir?
Oh, yeah, of course. I would love to send up pictures if nobody's been here. I'd like to send a photograph.
I'm sorry, they said they've been here.
Yes, but I would still like to send a photograph now so that everybody that hasn't been here will be able to look and see what we're talking about. Is that be okay?
Mr. Murray, are these the photographs that, are any of these, the photographs that either you or Mrs. Murray or your, I believe your son, who had spoken last time, had provided us? Or are they different?
Yes, yes, that's correct. But we also took one about 15 minutes ago that will have a lot more bearing. Actually, we have two photographs. We'll have a lot more bearing on the visual property and exactly what we're talking about here.
If you could, if you could email that, are you at a position to email that photo while we continue on with the rest of the segment? If you can email that photo to Andy Port, you can have him put it up. We're going to keep things moving along, though we will look at that. Mr. Port will put that photo up for us.
That's fine. We'll send you the photo and after you, before everything else gets going, after you take a look at it, and I'll, we'll continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, my email address is A.P.O.R.T., A. Port. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Murray. And while we wait for that to, that email to land, and we'll have it up in a moment, does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
Me? No, I don't need to talk into a speaker. This is Lynn Murray. I just want to address an issue. I just want to address an issue here regarding notifications that we've received regarding these meetings. I know we've had postponements, we've had cancellations with the crazy things that are going on in this world right now. But we received a letter from the Candace and Greg on the 12th of February prior to a meeting, and that is the first conversation. That's the first notice we ever had that this was even in the works and this was happening. There was no communication whatsoever. The first meeting on the 25th was postponed. After that, it was scheduled for March 24th, and that was canceled for some type of reason with a committee or whatever, maybe.
Virus.
Virus. So now we go into April. There was a meeting on April 14th, and that was canceled as well. And then we got to the meeting we're at now.
Well, we had, we, we went to.
Oh, that's.
The 28th.
Yeah, April 28th was, we had that meeting and it was postponed till now. We have never received any notification of any of these subsequent meetings prior to the first letter we received in April. So I just want to put that in the record. I just want to put that in the record because, you know, people, you had said at the last meeting, did anybody reach out to the Murray's? Well, no, not really.
No, not at all.
You know, we did have a brief conversation with Mr. Sava prior to the meeting that we, that we had that on the 28th. And that's it. We have never, never spoken to Candy and Greg regarding this at all.
We haven't spoken to them since last August.
Except for a very brief conversation. I just want to mention that to you. Now, you wanted to address the.
Oh, yeah, John. Sorry, this is for John Sava. If he's listening, if you're listening, you called, I think you said that my deck on my house is, what did you say, 26 feet?
26 feet.
26. I just walked out there with a tape measure, and it's.
Yes.
Mr. Murray, if I could interrupt respectfully, sir, I'm sorry, this is Chairman Rob Champetti again. If I can ask you to just limit, this is the section of, and we'll get to this certainly in questions and deliberations, but just to keep us sort of on the straight and narrow, may I ask, sir, if you could just limit your comments to simply comments? And we will certainly, if members of the board wish to dovetail on those, they certainly. But we don't, unfortunately, we can't have kind of a Q and A with some of the other professionals, though we as members of the board will take what you say and obviously cultivate questions from it. But if you can just pose the comments you wish to raise or wish us to raise, we'll move it along that way if we could.
Okay, okay. I understand that. I'm sorry. I don't know the rules here.
No apologies needed at all, sir.
Anyway, I said, I don't have a lawyer telling me to, you know, telling you all what happens. So I don't know the rule.
No lawyer needed. You just simply speak your mind and we, you know, we're all just, we're all just people. So we want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, you supposed to comment now. Say what you're going to say.
What did I say? I just said.
Okay, was, I didn't want to cut you short, Mr. Murray, was there anything else that you or Mrs. Murray wish to say?
No, no, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you both. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Looks like we have one, do we have another hand, Andy, or is that just Ms. Murray's?
Just Ms. Murray, yeah.
Okay, all right. We'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Any members of the zoning board of appeals who wish to pose a question, dovetailing on anything that you may have heard from the, from the public comment, questions of the applicant, just general questions, et cetera?
Yeah, this is Ken Swan, and I'd like to ask a question.
Um, Ken, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think Attorney Mead, you mentioned a couple of times the planning office and their advice and things. And I must say, at the last meeting, I took their advice to heart. heart, that we should be thinking about the piad in Plum Island, and, you know, each time we approve an expansion, you know, it's a cumulative effect over a number of years, and it has a really big impact on the resource. And and as you may recall, in the last meeting, that was a big part of where I was coming from. I appreciate you bringing up tonight the drawing, where you indicated that, I mean, first, first, I just want to say, I think it's, it's a nice move to to the changes you've made to the core proposal, but my question is, I see the drawing you have, the last drawing that was shown of what could be done instead. The applicant doesn't want to knock it all down and build a taller structure, because they don't want to have to climb all those stairs, I get that, but as I understand, I just don't make absolutely sure, and I did go back after the last meeting and very carefully reviewed the zoning bylaw and discussed it with the planning office, and my understanding is that they could do that by right without asking the zoning board of appeals, is that correct?
Um, well, I, I think they can do it by right, the issue is the lots preexisting nonconforming, so if they did it all within the setback, they could do it by right, yes, I believe that they would be able to do it by right.
And my other related question is, you know, they have a very small addition to the footprint on the first floor, and then they're putting a second story on, and the way I read the zoning bylaw, it would appear that if they weren't doing that little addition, which I don't really have a problem with, but if they weren't doing that little addition on the first floor, they could by right simply put the second story on as I read the zoning bylaw, is that correct?
No, I don't believe that's correct.
I see, okay, well, I appreciate you, I'll give my thoughts during deliberation, but I appreciate you confirming for me that they could by right demolish and rebuild and get to an even taller structure within the piad if they chose to.
They could, if I could follow up on that, but the zoning bylaw also allows them, as does forty-eight, section six, paragraph one, to modify their existing structure, as does the FEMA regulations, as does the Conservation Commission regulations and ordinance. So so I think that that also is important to keep in mind, that you're permitted to do those things if you meet the criteria as noted.
I thought you could also by right, if you weren't putting a little addition on the first floor, I thought you could go up a second story without going to the zoning board of appeals, not that I'm suggesting that, but I thought that was the case, but I think you've saying it's not.
No, it's not, because the, because you have to read the more conservative provisions of both section nine as well as the piad, and if you're adding more than five hundred square feet, and you have insufficient area and insufficient frontage in the district, you need a special permit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my question, thank you.
If I could make just a correction, just so you know, the deck elevation is a deck elevation based upon elevation, not on straight footage, so the twenty-six is elevation twenty-six, just like the first floor elevation of the proposed structure is twelve.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead, any other questions from the board?
This is Mark Moore, Mark Moore has, I'm sorry, I have a question of Attorney Mead, and I think you would ask Mr. Sava to address this, something about the cupola.
Cupola, right, so he made that smaller, John, could you talk about how you made that smaller?
Ah, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can, yeah.
Okay, I'm still new at this also, there's going to be many more coming, I hope. Yeah, the cupola went, got lower and smaller as we lowered the the entire roof. It's really a light box, it's really not, you know, it's to bring light into the center of the house. I guess with a small step ladder, you could get up and look out. Certainly not critical, but, and it's pretty far away from the Murray's, just adds some interest to the, to the, to the house, it's something I like to use in a lot of the houses I've done on Plum Island.
Understood, I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, it was downsized basically in accordance with with the changes that that you offered to make, so.
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, and thank you very much, Mr. Sava and Mr. Moore, any, any other questions from the board?
Yes, this is Stephen Delisle, just a follow-up question for Attorney Mead, with respect to the twenty-six feet and twelve feet, so we're talking about a a delta between that of fourteen feet, simple math, and that's because the twelve foot, the first floor at twelve feet is twelve feet above sea level, or maybe that's a better question for for Mr. Sava.
Right.
Regardless, whoever wants to answer, it's simply, we have a fourteen-foot delta between the the beginning of the floor on the first floor and the Murray's deck, is that correct?
That's correct, if you.
Yes, that's right, Steve, it's, it's established at twelve feet, they shot that the surveyor, and they shot the, you're exactly right, it's fourteen feet higher than finished floor of Greg and Candy's house. Part of the the reason for that is the, is the Murray's house actually is is quite high, it's sort of on the top of a knoll, and that street starts going down fairly quickly. So they are lucky in that it's, it is pretty high, that deck is pretty high, and as I said before, the peak of the new house, if if they were six foot eight, they'd be able to just about look over that house, and so, anyway, that's, that's what, it's fourteen.
And that brings, that brings me into just another follow-up question I had for you, just, could you just list for me just the the mean and the peak for the existing structure and the mean and the peak of the roof for the for the the new proposed structure?
Yes, I guess I'm still online here, right?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, the peak for the main house, the existing house, was at nineteen feet, and the mean height was at thirteen foot nine.
And then the mean and the peak for the new, for the the currently proposed structure would be?
The mean, I have, do you want it, John, or I have it right in front of me? The mean height, Mr. Delisle, is nineteen-nine, and the peak is twenty-three-nine.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you, so, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other members of the ZBA who wish to ask any questions, any questions from the board?
And Mr. Chair, just as any other members are considering that, just wanted to note that Lynn Murray has her hand raised, I'm not sure if that's still an additional question or comment, or whether or not additional public comment is warranted, but just wanted to note that.
Okay, thank you, Andy. All right, any other, any other questions from the board, going once, going twice? All right, so closing that portion of the hearing, I will move now into deliberations, and for purposes of deliberations, because this is a an application for a special permit for nonconformities, the board must find that there is no addition of a new nonconformity in order to grant the special permit for nonconformities, and that the proposed addition will not create any new nonconformity. In finding that, the application, the board has to determine that the application as proposed will not substantially more, be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, the pre-existing nonconformity use or structure under the piad, which is the Plum Island overlay district. The board can consider factors such as size, scale, massing volume compared to other structures in the neighborhood, and this is pursuant to section nine B two of the zoning ordinance. Thoughts or deliberations from the board? Feel free to.
This is Mark Moore, and I'll, I'll jump off, I guess, and pretty much echo the same sentiments I had last week on the project, and while I can certainly empathize with the Murray's and that this is a change from what they've been used to, in my mind, the applicant's gone out of their way to try to be as little intrusive, I can't think of the right way to put that, as possible with this change, and have been responsive in ways that I think deserve a little bit of credit. You know, no changes can be made on the piad without strict adherence to the, to the bylaws, and second floors are allowed if, and it doesn't increase anything past three bedrooms, these plans do not violate anything in my mind with the piad, as I don't think it intensifies that in any way. In I, to answer a question from earlier from the Murray's, yes, I have been down there and taken a look around, and because of that, I can say confidently that I don't see that updating the structure from its original footprint or on, pretty much on its original footprint, to add a bedroom that is allowed on the piad is in any way I'm going to intensify or substantially be more detrimental to a neighborhood that already has homes that are much larger and much taller, including roof decks. So with with due respect to the concerns of the abutters, and citing or agreeing with the case law that was presented by the applicant, I, I continue to support the project, so that's, that hasn't changed.
I'd like to chime in, this is Ken Swanon. I, for the Murray's, I also visited this site as I do each site, and so I have a good sense of what it looks like from the ground. Last time I voted no, and I did that, as you may recall, last time, because I was concerned about, you know, if the board keeps approving one after another of these, it is going to have a substantial impact on the piad, and I had a input from the planning office that, do we really want to keep doing, is that in the best interest of the piad? Since then, I've studied the zoning code a lot more, I've looked at what they could do without ZBA approval, as as came up earlier this evening, I even talked to a city council member about it. I think if the town wants to cut back on the amount of development in the piad, that's going to take a zoning change. I don't think the zoning board of appeals is the group to do that, I think we need to consider each of these individually. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Moore, that this, the applicant has made some considerable improvements to what was here before, and it fits in with the neighborhood, and I think it's a lot better than taking it down and building up a new building there that's even much higher. So I can support this application, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other further deliberations?
This is Stephen Delisle speaking, like Mr. Swanon, I also voted no on the project at our last meeting, however, based on, in large part, the the additional changes to the, to the project to lower the roof height from the la, the last iteration of the plans, I'm inclined to support the project this time around. I do agree with the, the notion that the, the upward extension of this structure now is not substantially more detrimental, I am swayed by that, however, I'm not particularly swayed by the, a couple of the cases cited in the, in the support letter, particularly Kenner or Harvard Square, which deal with something that in my mind is 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 different than what we're talking about here, we're a board assessing facts on the ground here to make a determination under our, our zoning code, and that being said, I do think that the changes, as explained tonight by Mr. Sava and Attorney Mead, are certainly a step in in the right direction, and I for one appreciate that they, that the applicants were willing to make changes when they did have an alternative, the course of action that they could have taken that would have been somewhat different and raised different concerns entirely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, any other members of the board wish to make note for deliberations?
Yes, Rachel Webb here, I was not in attendance at the previous meeting, however, I did qualify myself and listened to the minutes last night regarding this application specifically, and my position is that, had I been in attendance at the previous meeting, I too was inclined to not support the application as it was proposed, but seeing all of the adjustments and accommodations that the applicant has made to reduce the massing of the second floor, to appease the neighbors' objections, I think, in combination with the fact that they are keeping with the original footprint, makes it, it makes it possible for me to support this application.
All right, Ms. Webb, thank you very much, anyone else wish to speak, I'm sorry, any other members wish to speak in deliberations?
Hi, Bud Shagnon here, I'd just like, I guess, reiterate from the last meeting that I would still support this application, and and kudos to the applicant for making the changes, again, to try and make things a little bit more acceptable to the, to the next-door neighbors, I know it's never, change is never something easy, but I think they've gone in the right direction, and my hat's off to them, and I still support the the application.
Okay, Mr. Chenon, thank you very much, any other members wish to speak who haven't spoken in deliberations? Seeing no further hands, I'll just say, I agree with my colleagues, it appear, it appears that the applicant is certainly in my, in my estimation, and I too, I too have visited the site, they've met the burden for a special permit, I do note that I agree with the applicant's argument that, of course, views are not among the things protected, so certainly the board is not, would not be permitted to to base solely their decision on a, an impact on view, but in the totality, I, I feel like it's a, it's a good movement to try to accommodate the concerns of the neighbors nonetheless, and with due respect to the Murray's, that view, you know, the views seem to be improved with the lower roof height. So I will, having said that, I will just note that now that we have all of the members having logged on, I'll just point out for the record which members will be voting this evening. The voting members this evening will be myself, Rob Champetti, Mr. Stephen Delisle, Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Ken Swanon, and Ms. Rachel Webb, those are the the five voting members now that all members are told in, of course, all members can deliberate, and with that, do we have a motion to approve the application?
This is Mark Moore, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for twelve fifty-fourth Street, file number twenty-two-zero-one-nine.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Rachel Webb, I will call the roll. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanon?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
And Mr. Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative, the motion carries, and the application is approved. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Murray's for for being patient and your participation and input, it was very valuable and certainly very important to this process. Moving on to the next application that is on our agenda, the next two applications, in fact, have both been requested by the applicant to continue to five-twenty-six, so we'll just take a quick, a quick voice vote on both of these matters to continue them. We have the application of four sixty-eighth Street, twenty-two-zero-three-zero, Ryan McShara and Red Barn Architecture, the motion, I'm sorry, the applicant has made a request to continue their application to our next meeting of May twenty-sixth, do we have a motion to continue?
Yes, I'll make that motion to continue, it's Rachel Webb, for the next meeting, May twenty-sixth, the application that is twenty-two-zero-three-zero. The application that is 2020-030 for 468th Street.
Seconded Mark Moore.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Mr. Delisle, yes.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore, yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Mr. Swanton, yes.
Ms. Ms. Webb?
Ms. Webb, yes.
Rob Champetti, yes, five in the affirmative. The motion carries the matters continued from the meeting of 526. The next matter on our agenda is also been requested by the applicant to continue to that same date. It's Redco Construction, Inc., care of Lisa Mead, Mead Teller, and Costa for 3-5 School Street. Since Attorney Meade is here, Attorney Meade, is there anything you wish to say or can we just proceed with a motion to continue?
You may just proceed with the motion to continue. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, do we have a motion to continue the matter to 526?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Delisle, motion to continue variance and special permit for nonconformities for the applications for 3 through 5 School Street to May 26, 2020, to file number 2020-31 and file number 2020-32.
Mr. Moore, seconded.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Moore, calling the roll, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, yes, five in the affirmative. The motion carries and the matters continue to 526. Going to the next matter of public hearing that is going forward this evening. This is the matter of Mosley Village Condominium Trust, care of Attorney Mark Griffin for 1-15 Mosley Place. It is file number 036 of 2020 variance modification. The applicant seeks to amend an existing use variance to eliminate condition number 1.05, number five, relative to the use of materials for parking and driveway areas to go from brick and or pavers to macadam batuminous blacktop. May we hear from Attorney Griffin?
This is Andy Port. We don't see Mark Griffin in attendance. Not sure if that's if there's a reason for that. There is a person who was dialed in by phone. We're not sure if that is him. I wanted to give that person opportunity to identify themselves if for any reason it is Mark. So that person's phone number ends in 012.
Okay.
Andy, this is Stephen Delisle. There's a note in the in the chat function from a Claire Pappaness to you that says, this is Mark Griffin for the Mosley Place application. That might be Mark.
That's let's unmute the Claire listing.
Colleagues, I never would have guessed.
That's all right. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you.
Okay, this is Mark Griffin. I represent Mosley Village Condominium Trust in the in this matter. It's a modification of an existing variance. The trust is the organization of unit owners for the Mosley Village condominium. And in that capacity, they are responsible for the common areas of the condominium. And specifically, the common areas that are issue at issue with respect to this modification request are the paved areas of the condominium. So when the original variance was obtained by Symes Corporation and Mosley Village LLC back in 2002, they were granted a use variance actually to construct a multi-unit condominium, 14 units, seven buildings. You know, on off of Mosley Avenue with a new street name of Mosley Place. And it was granted for the multi-unit use in the R2 zoning district. The project included two affordable units and the variance included several specific conditions. The condition that we are seeking to modify is condition number five of section 1.05 of the variance that requires textured paving or brick pavers in the driveway and all parking areas within the site. Some photographs have been included in the application that I filed in addition to site plans and also the the aerial photo. You can see from the photos that were, you know, provided that the textured pavement, which basically stamped asphalt, which was utilized in the original development, has really deteriorated over time. And this is a significant, you know, cost issue for the trust based on the large size of the paved area on this particular project. There's about 17,000 square feet of paved area. The sort of textured pavement, it's very expensive to maintain and replace. And the actual life of the textured pavement pavement is very short. And so, you know, the condominium trust, having two affordable units within the 14 units, is unable to raise sufficient funds to make replacement of textured and maintenance of textured pavement feasible on an ongoing basis. The trust has done some homework on this. What they found is that it would be $90,000 to, you know, replace, excuse me, maintain, not replace, maintain the textured pavement, and they would only get 10 years out of that. And so if they went with normal sort of by two minutes asphalt, you know, the cost would be $60,000 and the life would be 20 to 25 years prior to replacement. And just by way of sort of giving you context, you know, the entire annual budget of this condominium is only $75,000. So, you know, to replace or actually maintain the textured pavement would consume the entire budget for one year. And if it were to be replaced with brick pavers, the cost would be over $250,000. So essentially, the trust is requesting that this condition be deleted from the original variance so that they can utilize normal asphalt pavement in this area. I would point out that when you look at the aerial photo, the area is bordered by trees and there's limited visibility to this area from the street. I don't really know why the original developer or why the planning board, excuse me, the zoning board imposed this condition. As far as I can tell, this isn't particularly attractive and it's not really something that the public sees very much of from Mosley Avenue. You know, I would also point out that, you know, aesthetics just don't seem to be a sufficient reason to maintain this condition. And that's essentially all I have for this. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Attorney Griffin, thank you very much for that. Moving to the public comment period, does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? And if you do, just please click, raise your hand and Andy Port will unmute your mic. Looks like we have one hand raised. Andy?
Yes, we have Beth Horn, if you'd like to speak.
Hi, I'm Beth Horn. I live at 13 Mosley Place. I happen to live in the affordable unit. And to go ahead and repair these, the stamped pavement certainly would create a financial hardship for me or to require us to go with the pavers. And the $200,000 would create a financial hardship for me. So I just wanted that noted for the record.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application?
Yes, we have one other person who has seemed to be identified by the number 71, if you'd like to speak. You will have to unmute yourself.
I believe I just did. My name's Peter Katsakos from Gemini Property Management. We're the property management firm for Mosley Village Condominium. I just wanted to share that unfortunately, it doesn't seem like the aerial photograph was presented. If looked at from that elevation, I think that the commission would see that there are no paved surfaces in the entire surrounding area of Mosley Village. Mosley Village is distinct in the fact that they have this asphalt paving. Thank you very much for putting that up. I just wanted to share that I developed the cost structures associated with the different replacement modalities. And I just wanted to validate that for the board, for the commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application? Any new hands? Let's see, we I don't see any new hands. Andy, do you?
I do not.
Hello?
We have one more, Susan Gallagher.
Come on. Hello?
This is Chairman Champetti. Ms. Gallagher, do you wish to speak in support of the application?
You've been allowed to speak if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm Susan Gallagher. I live at 2 Mosley Place. I'm one of about five original owners. And I know the intent of the conditions was to develop a village-like natural setting. And while ideally I would love to retain the brick-like drive, over the years, I've come to terms with the fact that it's not a reasonable or financially feasible condition to me. And I know we'll work to retain the value of our property in the field of a small condo community. But the convention is not feasible for us to meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the application?
And I see no new members interested in speaking, Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Port. No new, no new individuals wish to speak in support. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? And seeing no hands raised in opposition, we can go to questions from the board.
This is Mark Moore. I have a quick question. If asphalt was allowed to replace what's there now, I assume that the, it looks like cobblestone curbs would remain. Can anyone confirm that?
Attorney Griffin, can you can you just address whether the whether the apron, the cobble, the Belgian block cobblestone apron would remain even if blacktop replaced the stamped asphalt?
We had no plans on replacing the curb.
I think the question was about the the apron, though.
Right, yeah, no plans on replacing the apron.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And can I point out one thing while I'm still allowed to speak?
Sure.
The I would just point out that going back to that aerial photo, you'll see that the surrounding properties are pretty much all utilizing the normal by two minutes asphalt.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Griffin. Anyone else, any other members of the board wish to pose any questions of the applicant or Attorney Griffin?
Attorney Griffin, this is Stephen Delisle. Question for you, how long has the existing surface been in place?
Since the construction, actually. So going back close to the early 2000s. But it was a phased project, so the whole thing wasn't installed right away. But yeah, it was in the in the early 2000s.
So are we, follow-up question, is are we at the end of the useful life of this? I mean, obviously, yes, we are by the looks of it, but from a timing perspective, aren't, you know, your your paper says that the blacktop would last for 20 to 25 years. Isn't this just a capital expense for the condo association and not really worthy of a modification to a variance?
Well, it's definitely a capital expense for a condominium association, but it's also a financial hardship for the condominium association, which is
Right, but but with any capital expense, you know, you know what that it's coming due and you've had 18, 16 years to save for it.
Right, and there again, there's two affordable units in this complex. The ability to, you know, put aside supplemental assessments to do that kind of thing. It's just turned out to be much more of a hardship than anyone in this condominium ever envisioned when they bought their units. So it's, I guess, a greater capital expense. I believe the budget now is like it would take about 20% of the annual budget to put aside enough money to replace within a few years. And, you know, that's a very significant amount of fees among this community. You know, for basically a type of ass or a type of pavement that really doesn't provide the benefit to anyone at this point. If it was supposed to create a village concept, well, the village around it really doesn't care for it based on the cost and the amount of maintenance that has to be done.
I, this is Chairman Rob Champetti again. So I'm just gonna, you know, pop in a quick comment. You know, I'm shocked to say, but I've actually, I was on this board. I was brand new to the zoning board. This was 2002 when this application came before us. It was the faith in this project. I hear Attorney Griffin snickering and laughing, but no one's, no one's more shocked that I'm still on the board than I. But I can tell you, I do remember the conversations and being the only member of the board now that that was on the board when this was originally approved. I remember the discussions around the notion though well spirited and well intended to create a village concept at the time. And to temper that with the cost of actual actual brick pavers versus this product. We thought at the time, and I certainly was among them, and I'll take, you know, whatever credit or criticism goes with that, we thought this was the answer. I certainly thought so. I would have not known that 18 years later, you know, that it is, it comes with quite a price tag and quite a mantle of maintenance. So, you know, as a member of the board, I recall this and, you know, as we saw the rest of the neighborhood sort of develop around it, it was, it didn't catch fire like we thought it would, for whatever that's worth. I think it's relevant to just share. Any any other, any other deliberations from the board? Did we, did we, are we still in questions? Actually, I believe we're still in questions. Sorry about that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, Mark, it's Rachel Webb. I'm just curious if you had in fact taken a poll of the condominium association owners as to whether they were in support of this proposal or not.
Well, I met with all the trustees who run the condominium trust. And the trustees manage the common areas for the unit owners. So a poll of unit owners, no, but unanimous among the trustees that they wanted to do this.
Okay, thank you.
And Attorney Griffin, this is Rob Champetti again. The trustees speak on behalf, they speak for the unit owners?
Correct. Actually, you heard one of the unit owners speak in support of this, actually two of them, I'm sorry.
Any other questions from the board?
This is Stephen Delisle again. One, one quick follow-up question for Attorney Griffin. Attorney Griffin, do you have any additional factual information as to the condition beyond that which Chairman Champetti shared with us?
You mean the reason for imposing the original condition?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
I don't. It was, I was unable to unearth any other documents associated with it other than the variance itself.
Thank you. That, yes, I appreciate that. It seems like an interesting condition to have put on this development from the beginning. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'll dovetail in that. I mean, as, you know, as someone who can say they were in the room, you know, it was well spirited and well intended, for sure. We thought it would look better. It was a purely aesthetic choice. I actually recall this because it was one of the very first applications I voted on. And it was such a vast, you know, square footage area of cover that we thought for sure it would look better than blacktop. But what we didn't realize was that it would, you know, saddle these folks with, you know, unmanageable costs or at least these costs. So I'm, you know, I'm just learning of that now. So I'm, you know, I'm just learning of that now, and certainly appreciate and respect that that is a component of this.
Mr. Chair, the property manager might have something else to offer if he's interested. Just wanted to note that.
By all means, please. You can unmute his mic.
Oh, hello. Yes, am I unmuted?
You are.
I just wanted to, there were a couple of questions that were asked that I thought I had more information on. The community was queried on their support for the transition from the stamped asphalt to the traditional bituminous. And it was supported unanimously by the ownership. They actually had to approve the engagement of legal counsel to pursue this venue. And I just wanted to share that having been in this industry for 30-odd years, that I certainly understood the reasoning behind the first decision. The stamped bituminous was a relatively new product at that time, especially in application in New England. And the inherent vice of the product was not known at that time. And the majority of places that have implemented this product have basically chosen to replace it with another medium. Or in the case of a lot of municipals, they have access to funds for the premier coatings. Earlier, we presented that the maintenance of the surface as it exists now would run about $90,000 a year, $90,000 every 10 years. That was specifically for an overcoat, what you would think of as a seal coating on a black bituminous project. That $90,000 did not include the cost of repairs and replacements associated with maintaining this format. Had pavers been put in, that was one of the things that we saw in the original permit, was that it seemed like the intention was pavers. But to ease the burden on the developer, the stamped facsimile was permitted, of course, not knowing that it was crap to begin with. That, I just wanted to share that information, that the community did support it, and that unfortunately, this particular medium is not a good product for New England. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? Any other, are we still in questions? I'm sorry. Are we still in questions, or can we, have we moved out of questions? I don't know if there are any other.
We're still in questions, but.
Thank you, guys, and sorry about that. Any other members of the board wish to ask any questions before we move to deliberations? All right, seeing no hands. Deliberations. And again, this is a, let me just get to that particular portion. Okay, so the, this is an amendment to a variance, so the the board just has to consider whether the relief will not constitute a grant of a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon the other properties in the district. Whether the conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot, structure, or building. That strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot, structure, or building in a manner equivalent to the use permitted by other owners in the neighborhood. And that the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of this chapter. So let's just deliberate around those criteria on eliminating condition number five of section 1.05 of the variance. Anyone wish to kick off?
This is Mark Moore. I'll start anyway. You know, clearly, all the good intentions of trying to use this product in this area, you know, were just, I guess, it just wasn't known the shortcomings that could be involved using this product. And the crippling costs and full support of the residents certainly lead me to support this as really a the change of condition on our variance, it really, that didn't really seem to have any impact on giving the developer a variance to start. So, you know, the conditions and circumstances are unique to this lot that they were required when no one else in the area was required to use a surface difference in asphalt. It's probably a stretch, but I'll give it a whirl. That strict application of the variance criteria would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot in that budgets are finite, and despite trying to plan for expensive expenses that come up, capital expenses that come up, I don't think it was even considered that this would fall apart, I guess, the way it did after less than 20 years of use, and that upkeep would be as expensive as it looks. So because it's a finite budget, I think that holding this provision in place would definitely deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot, because it would take money from other areas like building upkeep and whatever. The unique circumstances, the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions that he's taken, that the applicant's taken subsequent to the adoption of the chapter. Because the decision for this condition was done, you know, in concurrence with this, so nothing's happened after it. And relief won't constitute a special privilege because they're surrounded by asphalt drives everywhere. And in fact, this is pretty much a semi-private series of, I'd say cul-de-sacs. So I don't know if that's clear enough with legal, but that's the gist of what I'm trying to say, is that I can support making the changes.
Okay, Mr. Moore, thank you. Anyone else wish to deliberate?
This is Ken Swanton. I just want to indicate that I thought Mr. Moore summed it up extremely well. I'm particularly swayed by the fact that nobody else in the area has this. So I think it's, as I said, I thought he summed it up very well.
This is Mr. Delisle. I would agree with Mr. Moore and Mr. Swanton.
Very good.
This is Rachel Webb, and I agree with my colleagues.
Okay, and again, this is Rob Champetti. I agree as well, and, you know, having having some recollection of this application, I can say that it was, you know, well-intended. But, you know, 18 years ago, I don't think I was alone in this thinking that it was a village and it would be a nice thing aesthetically and otherwise. Being the only member of the board still here, I'll say that, you know, we were mistaken. It doesn't seem to hold up the way it should. So I'm happy to support it, having originally voted on this. So do we, do we have a motion to approve the request to modify the variance on 1-15 Mosley Place?
I'll make the motion, Rachel Webb, to approve the variance modification application for 1-15 Mosley Place, file number 2020-036.
This is Mark Moore, seconded. Or Mr. Delisle.
I heard, motion was made by Ms. Moore and seconded by Mr., I'm sorry, made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chairman Champetti, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. The application for variance modifications approved. Attorney Griffin, thank you very much, and to those that spoke, thank you for your time and your patience. Moving on to the next application, this was also an application with an applicant request to continue to the meeting of May 26. It's the matter of Michael J. Gray, 12 Harrison Street. Do we have a motion to continue the matter to the meeting of May 26?
This is Mark Moore. I'll make a motion to continue the special permit nonconformities for 12 Harrison Place to May 26. That's file number 2020-037.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Webb. Motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb. Calling the roll, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chairman Champetti, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. The application is continued to the meeting of 5:26. Going to the next public hearing, this is the matter of Winward Shaw LLC, care of Attorney Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC for the matter, for the property at 149 State Street. Application number 038 of 2020, a special permit for nonconformities to construct a loading dock attached to the commercial building. May we hear from the applicant and Attorney Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa, 30 Green Street in Newport. And with me this evening is the architect for the project, Scott Brown. The applicant, Winward Shaw LLC, which is George Hazel Time Manager, who's the contractor, and the property is owned by Gordon Realty Holdings LLC. As the chair suggested in the opening, this is a proposal to actually add a loading dock area onto the existing structure. I think most of you probably are familiar with this building on State Street. It's located in the B1 zoning district, and it complies with all dimensional controls for the retail services use in the B1 district. The structure's pre-existing nonconforming itself, not the lot, but the structure for front yard setback. The front yard setback is 8.7, where a minimum of 20 feet are required. And the structure otherwise complies with the applicable dimensional requirements. The applicants proposed to construct a loading dock and related delivery area, as you can see in the elevations proposed here, that's less than 1,000 square feet. So, thank you, Andy. That's the site plan. So you can see this is located, as you face the building, on the right side of the building towards the rear. Many of you probably know this area. If you go to visit, you park in the front, and actually, you're parking partially on the layout of State Street. State Street paved width is much more narrow than the actual laid-out width. And so what we're actually doing is putting the loading area. Lost you, Andy. There we go. You can see where those dumpsters are back there. So if you kind of think about it, that's partly in the front of the building itself is part of State Street. So the loading dock is now going to be to the rear, so there's ample room to get off the property. So the loading dock will comply with all setback requirements under the ordinance. We have already received Conservation Commission approval, which you read about in your staff notes. But because the property is pre-existing nonconforming for the front yard setback required, because it's a commercial property, to receive a special permit for nonconformities, the first test is that there will be no intensification or extension of an existing nonconformity or the addition of a new one, and there will not be on this particular proposal. And that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. So before I go into that, maybe Scott, you can run everybody through the design.
Okay, sounds good. Well, Scott Brown, the architect for the project. Andy, could you go back to the Google Street View? Sorry, bear with me one second. Okay. Just scroll left a little bit. So anyways, Gordon Rug is a property that has always managed to catch my eye in a drive-by. It has a certain industrial rawness to it that I really appreciate. You know, right here in this street view, we're actually seeing sort of three different types of black metal windows. We're seeing kind of a mil-finished aluminum storefront, mil-finished aluminum canopy, sort of rust-colored retro-looking sign, which I really enjoy. And this is all sort of surrounded by this sort of brick facade that's looked like it's gotten reworked many, many times. So, but yet somehow, this sort of all works together magically as a composition. So with our addition, we're not going to be able to sort of, you know, duplicate that magic. So what we're intending to do here is to sort of have an addition of contrast. Can you pull up the site plan for me, Andy? So it's located in the back right corner, back where the dumpsters are, and there's sort of two things that two things that we're going to actually need to remove in order to accomplish this. Get that site plan there? There you go. So on the back right corner there, in that site plan, there's a pair, you know, a set of old kind of wooden stairs that we will need to remove. And we're also going to need to remove the existing loading bay, which is sort of noted where it says overhang there. The loading bay is, you know, kind of a bit of an ad hoc structure, which was sort of added on at at one time to provide a little bit of a cover for the door to the building back there. And it's currently covered in a very lovely T111 siding, so it's less than desirable from an aesthetic standpoint. So can we go, just pull up the front elevation again? So again, in your addition, you know, on the right side is, in contrast to the front, we are doing some things that are going to tie it together visually. We're matching the existing roofite. You know, the siding that we're proposing there is somewhat unique. It's a red cedar kind of horizontal shiplap siding. And the exposure of that's going to match the exposure of the brick, so it's going to tie together visually with the brick. You know, we're doing some other unique things. We're having some, you know, black metal canopies to add some interest up top. And this is more than just a big box off to the right side, where slipping and pulling some planes to add some visual interest. So although this thing is, you know, all about utility, it is a loading bay. I do think that this, at the end of the day, this is going to have some real curb appeal. I think it's a simple project, and I would like to think that we are making something nice out of what is really an essential loading dock for this business. So I guess with that, I will hand it back to Attorney Mead, who will close out our presentation.
Thank you, Scott. So the next criteria is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. First, the property is more than twice the required size for retail services and use, and the proposed addition is less than 1,000 square feet. Property is located in the B1 district. Proposed addition will be set back way more than 20 feet from the abutting property to the south. The rear of the proposed addition will be more than 100 feet from the rear lot line. The two bays will accommodate deliveries of goods to the property, which presently occur at the front and then kind of at the side in this area that Scott described. And the provision of the designated loading bay will help easily unload trucks, and it doesn't constitute a change that's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And so we would request that the board grant a special permit to modify this pre-existing nonconforming structure as proposed. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Mead and Mr. Brown, thank you very much for the presentation. Does anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Anyone in the audience wish to raise their hand and speak in support? Seeing no hands, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Also seeing no hands, we'll move on to questions from the board. Any members of the board wish to ask any questions? Okay, hearing no questions, we will move right into deliberations. And again, this application is, let's just take a quick look, so we can frame this. Let's see. Okay. Sorry, I just lost the screen here. All right, the application's for a special permit for nonconformities. So the board's deliberations should be centered around whether or not the board feels that the addition, that no new addition or no addition of a new nonconformity will grant a special privilege. The board must also find that the application will not be more, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming user structure. In making that factor, we must consider factors such as size, scale, massing, and volume as compared with the other structures in the neighborhood. And this is pursuant to 9B2 of the zoning ordinance. So if we can just tailor our deliberations around that.
This is Mark Moore. I'll jump off on deliberations. I, you know, I don't, I don't see the creating a new nonconformity, given the. given that the size and scope of the project with the loading dock and the addition, I don't, also don't see a substantially more detrimental impact on the neighborhood, especially given the businesses in close proximity and the size of their operations. With, I'm sure trucks coming and going, often delivering goods. So for those two reasons, I, I can support this.
This is Stephen Delisle, just to, just to make sure that we're all on the same page here. I think that this is a matter to be reviewed under 9B2B, which is for all other structures in uses, not for residential structure use. Use. And so we have to look at whether there will be no intensification or extension of the non-existing non-conformity or addition of a new non-conformity. And also, secondly, that the proposed change will not substantially, not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. And I think that both of those criteria have been met as we, as we have clearly heard through the, through the presentation of a few moments ago.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead. Any other deliberations?
Yeah, this is Ken Swanton. I'll just chime in. I agree with the other guys that I think this looks good. If anything, it's better to have the trucks dealt with in a nice way going out of the business. And I don't see problems here.
I agree. I think this will definitely improve the site plan issues with the site, even though that's not under our purview, having driven by there frequently enough to have the delivery trucks more onsite rather than on the edge of the site and in the street will be a great improvement.
Okay, and this is Rob Champetti. I agree as, I agree as well. Do we, do we have a motion to approve?
Mark Moore, I'll make a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities for 149 State Street File Number 2020-038.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Ms. Webb, calling the role of Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. Five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, the motion carries in the matter for the special permit of non-conformities. Thank you very much, Attorney Mead and Mr. Brown for your time, and we can move on to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Oh yeah, thank you. Moving to the next and last application, public hearing application, this is the matter of Mike and Densha Traster for the property located at 30 Howard Street, Application 039 of 2020, a special permit for non-conformities to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming single family and reconstruct a new single family, resulting in an upward extension of the front yard setback and adding over 500 square feet to the living area. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, good evening. This is Mike Traster and with Denise Traster. First, I just want to say thanks for hearing us tonight and good evening. Denise and I, a little history, just Denise and I have lived in Newburyport since 2008. We bounced around from Smith Street to Merrimack, and now we have this opportunity before us on Howard Street. I'm going to have our architect, Chris Vance, speak on the matter. And Mr. Port, can you unmute him, please?
I have done so. Yep.
Hi, this is Chris Vance. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Address is 254 Bay Road in South Hamilton, and I'm Principal Advance Architects. And we're here today to ask for a special permit for non-conformities, as stated, for an upward extension, upward extension of the front yard setback and also an increase of 500 square feet. We propose to demolish the 1952 one-and-a-half-story Cape Building that's currently on 30 Howard Street, which you can see is outlined on the site plan. And we propose to construct a two-story. Yeah, if you want to. So as you can see on Howard Street, so we're, we propose to demolish the one-and-a-half-story Cape there and build a two-story. And if you look at the front elevation, you can see that what we've tried to do is stay in with contacts of the neighborhood, which is predominantly two-story homes. And what I've done is lowered the eve line of the second roof to only be about eight feet above the current structure, so not to go very high. And as you can see on the elevations, the site dropped significantly from the street to the lower grade, about seven feet. So on the rear elevation, we would have a full walkout basement. As you can see there, so from the front street grade to the rear grade, you have about a seven-foot, a seven-foot drop. And we've also made the setbacks conforming on the side yards. The current setback is 9.4 feet from the property line, and we've increased that to 10 feet. And we've also kept the other side yard setback to 10 feet, so staying within your dimensional constraints. And we've also used the established front yard setback to cite the house from the front street, which is about 20.1 feet. And the dimensional requirement is 25, but again, using the established front yard setback. And that existing front elevation, we have extended 8.3 feet from the current structure. And overall, there's about a 1,800 square foot increase from the current structure, which is a livable area of about 1,000 square feet, and we've gone to 2,800 square feet of livable space.
Very good. Was there anything, anything further you wanted to add, Mr. Traster or Mr. Vance?
No, we find that the new design is not going to be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. We've helped decrease the, you know, sidebar, side yard setback infringement. And we've also looked at ways to reduce the new ridge line to stay more in contacts with the houses on Howard Street.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can add something, sir?
Sure, of course.
We went around to the neighborhood and just showed all our neighbors the plans. So we were, you know, we disclosed it with everybody around the neighborhood, sir.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Traster. I appreciate that input as well. All right, moving on to members of the, of the audience, anyone wish to speak in support of the application? Just, just show, designate that by raising your hand? Seeing no hands raised, anyone wish to speak in opposition of the application? If so, just please raise your hand on the Zoom toolbar. Seeing no hands raised, we will close that portion of the public hearing and move to questions from the board. Any members of the ZBA wish to ask any questions?
I have I have a question to the applicant regarding the different roofing materials. I noticed that the first floor roof is a metal roof and the roof on the main body of the house is asphalt. And it also looked like there were different sidings. You had vertical sidings on the garage and horizontal on the main body of the house.
Correct. We propose to have a standing seam metal roof on the lower along the porch, and that wraps around the garage. And on the upper roof and the dormers have asphalt shingles. And using a combination of clapboard and board and baton siding to break up the massing.
And are those all windows on the first floor on either side of the front door that look about the same size as the door?
Correct, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Hi, this is Stephen Delisle. I have a few questions. What how much living space are you going to have on the basement level, on that walkout basement level that you were describing earlier?
It's going to be unfinished.
Unfinished?
Correct.
Okay. And in all, the new structure will have, I think from the plans, it looks like the new structure will have 2,700 square feet, more or less?
Correct, yes.
So you'll, the, the new structure will have approximately 2.5 times the living space as the existing structure?
The existing dwelling, correct, yes.
Yeah. And what about, what, can you can you tell me the difference in the height as between the existing structure and the proposed structure?
Yeah, the, so the existing structure from the average grade was 24 feet, three inches. And the new structure is going to be 32 feet, seven inches. So it's about eight, eight feet, four inches difference in, in height.
And when you say the average grade, right, because that, as you said, that lot really slopes off dramatically. What's, what's the average grade relative to the like the, the front, the grade of the front, the street side?
So the street side, it's about it's about nine, nine feet from the first floor down to the basement floor. So it's about, which is about two feet above the street grade. So you're at seven feet.
Okay, so the, the, the change, if you're looking at the house from the street, how much taller will it appear? Maybe that's the way to ask the question. Or how much taller will it actually be? Is that still just the, the, the eight feet?
Correct, yeah.
All right. And I think importantly, how, you're, the math on the 25% with respect to, I think, the open space? How close are you on that math? I mean, are you, you know, are we creating a new non-conformity with the open space or not?
So, yeah, the lot coverage.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, lot coverage, thank you.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, when calculated by the, the surveyor, he had exactly 25%. I had come up with a little bit less than that, but when he, when he laid it on the site, it was at 25%. And that's because we have a, a sunroom off the, a roofed sunroom, which adds to the lot, the lot coverage. But we're, we're right at the 25%, which is part of the, the dimensional requirement.
Okay, and just, you know, lastly, one, one quick sort of nit. In the closing of, of your, your presentation, you mentioned that this would be, you know, the new structure would fit right in with the houses on Howard Street. I, unfortunately, I grew up around the corner from there, and I don't think that it fits in at all with, with the small houses on Howard Street, both going downhill from Chapel Street and on the other side of Chapel Street. The houses are, are relatively modest in that, in that section of, of town.
Yeah, I think, I think what's unique to 30 Howard Street and 28 Howard Street is when you look from a street elevation, you know, we tried to maintain a lower eve line, so you have more of a one-and-a-half story facade, but then when you look at the rear elevation, because it does drop off so significantly, if you looked at the back of 28 Howard Street, which is the property adjacent on the right there, it looks like three stories because of the topography change.
Well, okay. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Ken Swanton. I have a question. When we look at the dimensional table, the, the big thing that this non-conformity is the 19 with this one setback that you're maintaining at 19 feet. When I look at the rest of the neighborhood, it doesn't seem like very many people are at 25 feet anyway. I mean, is that, I guess that's my question. What? I'm just looking at a Google map overview of, of, of the street, and it seems like very few people have a 25-foot setback. Is that, is that your understanding of this Howard Street?
Correct. I think that most of the homes along Howard Street are consistent with the current structure at 30 Howard Street, which is roughly around 20 feet from the street side. So we'd be maintaining that established front yard setback.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. You, the applicant stated that you took the plans around and spoke with the neighbors and showed them the plans. Did any of them voice their opinions, either in support or not in support of this? Because we did not receive any letters either way.
Yes, ma'am. We went around, I don't know the exact addresses on Forest Street, but we went to all the abutting properties. So if you, that image that's on your screen right now, on Forester Street, there's three homes at a butt 30 Howard Street. And we went to all three. Nobody stated against our, the, our, our project. If the one on Howard and Forester Street, excuse me, both, both those houses on opposite sides of the street, they, they were for it and supported us. Every, and we went to the three houses on Howard Street as well. Up, if you want to move it.
26 and 24, I think.
Yeah, 28, 26, and 24, and they, they all were in support of it as well, ma'am.
Rachel, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Seeing no hands, we'll move to deliberations. And again, in deliberating, since we are deciding a special permit for non-conformities, the board must find that the application will not be more, not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conformity, non-conforming user structure. When making the finding, the board may consider factors such as size, scale, massing, volume as compared to the other structures in the neighborhood. And again, this is pursuant to Section 9B2 of the Newburyport zoning, zoning. I'll also note that because the structure's age is under 75 years, it was released for demolition by the Historic Commission as not a historic structure. Anyone, any takers? Anyone wish to, to kick things off in deliberations?
Yes, Mark Moore, I'll, I'll kick it off. I don't I find that I can, I can support this with a, a front yard setback improving slightly and bringing both side yard setbacks in compliance, while one's already in, but improving one to make that compliant. And given the size and types of the homes and the fact that as far as we know, there were no complaints from immediate abutters in the neighborhood. I can't find that it's substantially more detrimental, so I wouldn't be in support.
This is Ken Swanton. I think Mr. Moore summarized it pretty well. I think the only real, if we look at the table, that it's, it's other than it being a lot size, it's a little tiny bit small. And the frontage is small in the pre-existing lot, all the dimensions fit other than the front setback, and it's where it has been, and the other houses on the street aren't exactly set much further back anyway. So I can support this.
I cannot support this application, I'm sorry. I think that the scale and massing of the proposed change is so much more than what is already there. It would end up being probably so much more than what is already there. It would end up being probably the largest home on Howard Street. I think it's out of character with the neighborhood. And I, I cannot support this application.
This is Stephen Delisle. I'm going to agree with Ms. Webb, that this is outsized for the, for the neighborhood. And I think that, in, in addition, I think that you, you're coming up against the 25% lot coverage, and there's the, the Supreme Judicial Court decision in Bjorkland that, you know, really frowned upon sort of mansionization. So I I like the way it looks, but I just, I'm, I'm just having a hard time with this one.
Okay, this is Chairman Champetti again. Just sort of hearing the, the numbers as they're presenting themselves, I'm going to interrupt for a moment and pose a question, an interim question to Mr. Vance and Mr. and Mrs. Traster. You would require a four in the affirmative vote from the ZBA in order to prevail. If we were to go forward with a, a motion to approve in a second and then take a vote, and the application were to not succeed, you would be barred for two years, unless there was a substantial change. So we want to give, as we do with every applicant, an opportunity, just, you know, hearing the, the numbers as they, as they evolve. If you wish to take a step back and ask for either a continuance or ask to withdraw without prejudice, the, the typical treatment of this board is that we would, you know, barring some reason, some exigent reason, we would certainly entertain that motion, but now would be the time to make it. Before we proceed, is there anything that Mr. Traster, Ms. Traster, or Mr. Vance, you wish to do to kind of suspend what's, what's about to take place?
Yeah, thank you.
Let's go ahead, Chris, talk about that.
That's okay. So if we decide to request a continuance, can we resubmit plans based on the feedback from the board tonight?
Certainly, you, you could. I mean, you could take a step back, and certainly we feel as a board, and I think I don't, I don't speak solely for myself, but for the collective of our members, you know, we, we think that better applications are born of a collaboration, and this is part of that collaboration versus, you know, zoning by ambush, you know, inadvertent or otherwise. So, so that's why we sort of interrupt the proceedings as we, as I, as I hear the numbers as chair. I want to at least give you the opportunity to say, okay, well, let, let's see if we can make it better. Let's take a, a second run at this. So that's what this would be. If you wanted to, you would ask us to entertain a motion to continue, determine, you know, how many cycles of meetings you think you need. And we would entertain that motion and consider continuing the application, you, you know, without any decision, yea or nay.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm not sitting with my clients at the moment, but Mike and Denise, I would suggest that we continue the to the next hearing, and we would take the feedback from tonight and reevaluate the design.
Okay, Mr. Vance, if I'm going to just ask you to give me a moment, Andy and Caitlin, can you guys determine what our, what the docket looks like on the next meeting, which is the last meeting in, in May, and then the first meeting in June, where we might be able to slide this application in?
Yeah, this is Andy. I apologize. I'm unable, unable to pull up the city's calendar right now to confirm the agenda items. There's something wrong with the city server. Caitlin may have access to that right now, though.
Hi, Rob. The first meeting in June looks pretty wide open at this point. And the meeting, the next meeting has four new applications, I think.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to the city side as well. So I'm looking at the, the first meeting in June would be June 9th. I'm just pulling up that. Okay, so going then back to Mr. Vance, I believe you were speaking on behalf of the Trasters. It looks like the meeting of June 9th is a, there is, there's some open slots. Would that give you enough time to take a step back and, and try to refine this?
Yeah, I think that would be plenty of time. So if we can have a motion to continue to June 9th.
Okay, thank you. Members of the ZBA, so we've heard from the applicants. Is there, can we have a motion to continue as per the applicant's request, their application to the meeting of June 9th?
This is Stephen Delisle. I'll make that motion, a motion to continue application 2020-39 for a special permit for non-conformities to June 9th, 2020.
Mark Moore, seconded.
Okay, the motion's made by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Moore to continue the matter of 30 Howard Street to the meeting of June 9th. Taking the roll call now, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Swanton, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Webb?
No.
And Chairman Champetti, I vote yes on the continuance. That is four in the affirmative, one no vote. The eyes have it, the motion carries, and the matter is continued to the meeting of June 9th. So thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. and Mrs. Traster for your patience, and for anyone else that might be listening. Okay, so members of the zoning board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Our pleasure. Andy and Caitlin, we, we, since we've reached the end of the docket and the agenda, that concludes the, the business of the public hearing of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals for the meeting of May 12th. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mark Moore.
Seconded, Ken Swanton.
All right, motion's made to adjourn by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton. This is just an eye vote. All those in favor, just please, just say so by eye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, the motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and everyone's participation. And thank you, Gretchen, for note-taking, and Andy and Caitlin for setting all this up. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Agreed, thanks. Stay safe.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.